Testing one, two, three. 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 Testing one, two, three.
They're asking us what that is.
Yeah. Mysterious beeping, so we'll find out then we'll start the meeting.
Yeah, it sounded good sound.
Good? Okay. All right, so we're gonna start the meeting. Please stand. Flag's low.
I pray to the deities to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Shi.
Here.
Mr. Mohim Patel.
Here.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Ms. Conway.
Here.
Dr. Chen.
Here.
Ms. Podofsky.
Here.
Ms. Matticar.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Burrell Patel.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Opening statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices. Copies of the notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 5th, 2021, and April 16th, 2021. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. So today is our annual budget hearing, so, and the reappointment of the staff. So let's start with the budget hearing. Dr. Brager.
Okay. Thank you, Board President Shi. I'm gonna stand over there. Is that okay? We got a few slides. I don't know if the board members wanna come down. Okay. As with everything we do in the schools, you know, creating the budget, putting programs together, everything, it comes back to our mission. What are we doing here? What is our goal? That's our mission as it's formally stated, but when we design the budget, we're thinking in mind, what can we do to provide the best education possible for the students of Edison Township, and do so in a fiscally responsible manner, so that everyone can achieve their maximum potential, and be full participating citizens in the global society. And I think it's important to start, when we mention anything about the monetary outlays and the budget, that we start with our mission statement, because this is why we're here. This is why our Board of Education is elected and dedicates their time to the service of the cause of educating the students of Edison Township, and that's what we all do. At the core of everything that we do in our endeavor in the entire district, including the entire budget, comes back to this. And it's our job, and my job as superintendent, to ensure that we're doing all we can to adhere to that mission statement, and provide the adequate resources to bring it to life. The enrollment in Edison Township is no surprise to many people, especially those of us that have been here for years. It's a testament to our schools that people move through this community, that people want to attend our schools. That's great, and it's a privilege and an honor to have all those students coming to our buildings every day. But as you know, and many of the board members have been here, and community members have been at these meetings for some time, we have an enrollment issue. We have students that, more and more students every year, and it's something we have to be very cognizant of, and when we plan our budget and we look at things, long-term capital projects, to address that, I'll talk a little bit about those later on, but our enrollment has gone up, as you can see there, significantly, just in the three years that are listed, four years counting the projections for next year. And at some point, we're talking about full-day kindergarten, which I think is warranted, when we can have the capacity to do that, I think it's gonna increase even more, because some of our families choose private options for kindergarten, because they can do it in a full-day environment. But these are things that we think about, and I know the members of this board are well aware, our most significant overcrowding issues are both high schools, and that's not indicative of people moving into the district, it's the students that we have already here. We're graduating smaller classes in 12th grade, as we have coming up, all the way from 4th grade on up. So it is something we need to be cognizant of as we develop our budget, and talk about allocating resources for our children. Some of the things that are included in this budget, all the programs we have this year will remain intact, and I think that's important. We talked about a zero budget, I'll get into the numbers a little bit, but everything that we currently have in place will remain so. And then we want to provide some enhancements. One of the missions I was given to from the board was to provide more opportunities for advanced placement students, for our high-performing students, we're doing that. One small example of that is expanding our advanced placement offerings, and also enhancing our dual enrollment program at Middlesex College, where students starting in September that are enrolled in the program will be able to graduate four years, not only with their high school diploma, but also with an associate's degree from Middlesex County College. We're very proud of that. Elementary curriculum is being, we, is gonna be changed this year, revised, and last year we did the English Language Arts, this year we're doing the science curriculum for K-5. There are other minor curriculum changes that are gonna happen throughout, depending on which course is at secondary level, but when we do an elementary curriculum revision, with the number of students that we have in our district, it's a significant outlay of cash. So this year we're doing the science K-5, as was, I think was reported at our last curriculum, in Technology Committee notes. Some of the infrastructure improvements that we need to take into account with this budget are our school roofs. On an annual basis, it's not something pretty, it's not something people wanna talk about, and something that we wanna dedicate funds to, and, you know, it's not something really glamorous that we get a lot of bang for our buck. But without a roof, we'd all be sitting here in the rain, getting wet, so it's important that we make sure we maintain these on an ongoing basis, so they don't get to a point where it's a total, it's no good anymore, we have to do a total replacement. So we normally allocate a few million dollars each year to replace roofs, and we did that last summer, we would do that this year as well. Classroom renovations and updates, you know, some of our buildings were built in the 1950s and 60s, that's a long time ago, as the older I get, it doesn't seem that long ago, but that's a long time. And we're in the process every year dedicating resource to, resources to refurbishing classrooms on a regular basis, and also some of the larger infrastructures, lavatories, bathrooms, large areas like the auditoriums, the cafeterias, the HVAC. And then things to mitigate the overcrowding. At our meeting last week, we approved the purchase of the Our Savior's Church, which we're going through with the legalities of that, signing the contracts and giving the deposits, getting approvals from the Department of Ed. And we need to look at other things, as we look at the property potentiality on Tomridge Road and Coolidge, to making that a potential career academy, potential high school, will alleviate some of the overcrowding there, as well as some of the other properties that we're in discussions with the township. I know Mrs. White and other people are a champion of the Stelton School, if we can bring that to fruition, I know they've been talking about that since I've been here. And we're in conversations with the township and the mayor's office, and if we are able to secure those things, they require an outlay of money and capital. You know, the Stelton School, we were actually over there today, Dr. Alderelli and I looking at that. That would require a significant outlay of cash in order to bring it up to speed, and make sure those classrooms are appropriate for students, you know, in 2021. So those are some of the things that would be included in this budget on an annual basis. The Lincoln Elementary School addition is not in this budget, but I just wanted to put an update in there, because that money's were already budgeted from last year, well, this year, current year. The anticipated opening of that is September 2022, so we're excited about that, and we'll be able to provide a large area, some large area spaces, as well as 10 additional classrooms, that we thought that came in at a pretty appropriate price of $9 million. Okay, I think this is the most important slide in the presentation, and there aren't a lot, because we're not gonna delve into specifics, and I will entertain any questions. But the tax levy for last year's budget was $235 million and change. The tax levy for next year's budget is $235 million and change. That's the lowest it can be. That's the lowest it can be, that's the lowest we are allowed to have it. That's a zero increase. Now, my colleagues at Central Office said I should say zero, drop the mic and walk away, but I'm not gonna do that. The board actually tried to go lower. We tried to use the increase in state aid monies that were received to make that lower. It's not legal. We weren't allowed to do it in the state software. After further review and investigation, we found out, you're not allowed to do it if you're a district that's considered to be funded under adequacy, which is what we are. That is as low as the budget can be. The allocation of tax dollars from our community members is the same as it was last year. That's the best we can do. The overall budget is up from the $274 million approximately that was finally approved after we had the reduction in state aid to $3 million last, I wanna say July or August. And that $11.4 million increase almost is what the exact additional amounts in state aid is. So I think that's a significant achievement for the board to put forth a budget that has a zero tax levy increase. These are the numbers here, and it might be kinda small. As I get older, if I was sitting in your seats, I don't think I could see any of this, but I could see a little bit of it right now. But one of the things that is sometimes confusing, and it's confusing for me at times, and I've been in this game 32 years, the school budget year is different than the calendar year, which is the township year. You know, our school year starts July 1 and ends June 30. The typical calendar year starts on January 1 and ends December 31. It creates a disparity in the numbers, because half of this year's tax base for 2021 is last year's budget, which is currently this year's budget. So if you look at those numbers for the school levy from 2020 to 2021, it looks like it went up $107. And it does go up $107, but that's related to half of the year is based on our current budget. If you look at the numbers there, and I had the clicker, but I don't think it works too well. Yeah, something I gotta put in the budget is money for a new clicker. But anyway, the contribution, if you look on 2020 under school tax, 2019, 20, 2019, 2020 budget is $224 million on the tax levy, and the portion of the 2020, 21 is 235 million. If you look over at 2021, school tax, those numbers are exactly the same. So if we came with a zero budget next year for the tax levy, you would see there'd be zero increase, because that number would stay exactly at 58222. It's a little bit confusing, and if there's questions on that, I'll ask you, but that's why it's not at exactly zero, because half of our current budget is counted on 2021 tax year. This slide is pretty significant, and we've done our research. We tried to look at other schools. We're a large school. We have 19 school buildings, almost 17,000 students, as we reported earlier. And we're efficient. We provide superlative programs, second to none, and yet we do it at a cost that's significantly lower than anybody else. That's the latest data we had, was from 2019 to 2020, for comparative purposes, of every district in New Jersey that's larger than 3, excuse me, 3,500 students, that has a K-12 district. We are the lowest. The average number is $16,834 per pupil, and our current budget, now this is our current, we're comparing our current budget to, that's a year ago, is $13,401 per student. So kudos to the board for keeping things efficient. We're not top-heavy. We don't have a lot of fluff in the budget. We don't have a lot of waste, and we're getting a good bang for our buck. This is an exciting piece, too, and this is outside of the budget. Those that were around and were at these meetings over the course of the last year recognize at times we talked about CARES grant monies, federal monies that were put aside for the COVID-19 relief. There was one that came out not, not long after the impact of the virus at our schools in, I wanna say, April or May. This is the second round. It's called the ESRS II funding, and it amounts to almost $4.8 million all in. And the first part of that grant money is $4.3 million we're gonna use to help mitigate some of the HVAC issues in this, in this building here, as well as in Edison High School. We're trying to do it in some of the large spaces, such as the auditoriums, as well as the cafeterias, to provide updated HVAC when we have large groups of students getting together, but also to provide the opportunity to have air conditioning in those large spaces. The learning acceleration money will be dedicated towards summer funding and summer programs to help support our students. And the mental health grant speaks for what it is, to provide more additional support for some of our students that may be struggling with that. The exciting part is, and I think some of our community members actually mentioned this a few times, was there's a third round of CARES grant monies that will come out to about $12 million. I don't have it. It wasn't allocated yet to the district as they come through the New Jersey Department of Ed homeroom, but it's coming. And that'll provide us additional monies that we can use, and, you know, we have to talk to our Finances and Facilities Committee and the Board of Education, but those are some of the larger project, $12 million is a lot of money that we could use for some of the issues that we need to mitigate the impact of COVID, overcrowding, HVAC concerns. It's a lot of money, and it comes, it is not funded at all on the local, local tax levy. So we don't even have those exact numbers to have that discussion yet, but that are additional funds that are outside the budget. At some point, we have to cycle this money through the budget. It'll be an inflow from the CARES grant, and it'll be outflow for what we purchased with those monies, but it doesn't impact our tax levy in any way. But you need to know that as we move forward. And the last question that I would ask is, you know, how much is your child's education worth? We think, I know I think as superintendent, and I think our board does too, in the budget we're putting forth, we're providing a great product at what we feel is a great price. And I didn't mic drop, so this will be the end, I guess, at this point. I guess we'll open up for any questions, and if it's okay with the board for questions, can I sit over there where I have my notes? You can hit that next slide, too, because there's a nice little graphic we put together. Good job.
Okay, so now we're open up first for board members. Any board members have any questions about this budget for Dr. Bragan? Yes, Mrs. Conway.
My initial question is, at the last meeting in April, we had a presentation from the insurance company, and since insurance is such a large chunk of money, are we any closer to knowing our costs? Or when will that take place?
It's a great question, and I know that's a concern that many of us have. We actually scheduled a meeting with the Alamo Group for tomorrow. I believe it's at 2:30. They're gonna come to us with our projections. I spoke to Mr. Alamo today on the phone. He said he has some exciting news that he wants to share with us, and it looks like our projections are gonna come in where we anticipated, but as soon as I get that information, I will share it with the board.
But how will that affect the money in the budget?
Well, I believe, and I think when we met with our insurance representatives, that we budgeted an adequate amount to cover the insurance, and as we have now, for the plans that we have for all our employees. So I don't, I don't think it's gonna impact at all. I would hope at the end, it comes in less, the actual cost is less than we budgeted, so we would have additional monies and excess surplus at the end of next year.
So this would be still going through with the self-insurance, what they had explained to us at the last meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members? Yes, Shiwi.
So I also actually had the same.
Shiwi? Closer to the mic.
I also had actually the same questions on the health broker, sorry, the health insurance company, and the self-insurance. Because we are approving the budget without really knowing what exactly the self-insurance plan is, because I had a lot of questions when the plan was presented, and I did not get my answers, because they kept saying that, you know, they're waiting for, to see all that, and they can't disclose everything. And so, I mean, I had asked them for a flowchart from the beginning to the end, you know, what are the different processes, you know, who are the people who are gonna be, you know, dealing with other things. We never got an email back from them. We don't know whether it's, what type of a contract it is. Is it a one-year contract, two-year contract, three-year contract? Is it binding? If the first year we don't like it, can we get rid of it? Is there a time where the risk insurer can back off? What, and I had asked this question last time also. It's a hypothetical question, but what if the risk insurer gets bankrupt? Like, what happens then? So we, I mean, even though it might, that's not plausible, we still have to kind of consider those things. And all projections also say that next year there's gonna be an increase in healthcare utilization, and, because many people have put off their needed healthcare because of COVID. So, so for me, I mean, I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, why we did not finalize the self-insurance before we had to vote on this budget?
Is that, is that it?
Yeah, then I have just two other things, but those are minor.
Okay. Great questions. Normally, the budget is approved every year before the renewals are, we have them whenever we put out for insurance, because the budget is typically due in March, and we normally vote on it this time. You know, it's due to the state by March, so we have to have a projection, and we go by what our projections we feel they are. We are working with a broker who's in the, in this line of work. We got information from individuals and companies that are in the field, Horizon, Aetna, the other large insurance firms. And this is a process that we typically go through. I think Alamo tried to do a good job of explaining it at our last meeting, that we're not changing coverage, we're not trying to take away anybody's coverage, we're not reducing anything. What we're trying to do is take away the profit margin that the carriers have. Why give them $5 million in profit when we could give it back to our community members who are paying, in some instances, 35% of the cost of the insurance? So that's the goal. And normally, we don't have our renewal rates until after the budget is approved anyway. So we do take an estimated guess of what we think it would be. We do feel we have it adequately budgeted, and we could do exactly what we have, what we planned. However, let's say there's something that's catastrophic that we don't account for, and it's significantly more than it was. Two things. In the event that that happens, what that's gonna change is our renewal for our reinsurance for next year, because we are gonna have the reinsurance this year. The reinsurance is already in place with the carrier for anyone that goes over $300,000 at the stop-loss rate. So let's say we had a bunch of people that had all kinds of situations this year, due to whatever reason, an anomaly, the COVID, or whatever happens. We're gonna have a premium that's based on last year, so that will really actually impact next year's budget, because they will come out with a higher reinsurance premium. Let's say we have a bunch of significant cases that don't reach that threshold and come in at, you know, again, I'm trying to make light of it, but don't, I don't mean to make light of anyone's medical condition. We have, normally have 10 people with a shoulder surgery replacement, and this year we have 25. And those don't reach the $300,000 cost, but they reach the $180, $225,000 cost, and it goes over what we budgeted for the premiums. We have monies in our capital right now that if we had to, we could use as a reserve. I don't anticipate it, because the capital with the increase in state aid of $11.4 million puts our capital line item with our roof replacements, as well as our $6 million that we had allocated for additional improvements, at over $19 million. So even if there was something catastrophic that we didn't think of, which I don't think there is, if we needed to, we could transfer those funds, and still not impact anybody negatively or cause anything to go up for next year. So I understand the trepidation, but with all of life, there's a little bit of a risk involved, but I don't think this risk is very significant, or I wouldn't have recommended it to the board. Regarding the contract length, the board can't approve any contract for more than a year at any time for anything or any employee other than the superintendent. So even if we entered into a two-year agreement and the board wanted to change it after a year, they're able to do that. The board has that, that access. Any contract with the Board of Education is valid from year to year, as you know, at the annual meeting that'll take place later this month. So normally, though, those contracts are for a year. I know in last year and in previous years where I worked in other districts, we tried to secure a two-year commitment, and that commitment really guarantees the savings for us, and not really for the provider. And, and right now, at least last year, nobody would commit to two years, so that's why we, we stuck with a one-year commitment with Horizon. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Bragan. My other question is that, I mean, we talked about, you know, doing a calendar year budget versus a fiscal year budget. Is that a state requirement to do the budget the way we do, because sometimes it gets confusing for people to understand, you know, what, what is attributable to which year?
I'm not sure there's any other way to do it, though. We, we have to follow the parameters by the state, so.
So that's a state parameter statement?
I mean, we go by the fiscal year, and the township goes by calendar year. I don't think we have any options regarding it.
And the state dictates the calendar based on...
And the state also dictates the budget calendar based on the type of school district that you are.
Okay. Yeah, because it's confusing. I wonder why they do that. They should just do like a fiscal year, because it fiscal year kind of matches the school year, so it's much easier to kind of understand what the budget is all about. And finally, you may not have the answer yet, but this is, this had asked before about the savings, and will the budget be read, readjusted if we figure that there is significant savings?
I think what you're asking me is, at the end of this year, if we have additional monies that were unencumbered or not used, what would we do with that money? Is that the question?
Yeah, I mean, what, yeah, what would we do with that money?
At the end of the year, on June 30, we'll know exactly how much monies were left in this budget. And in all likelihood, there's gonna be some monies that are left over. There are some costs that were lower this year, right? Some of our maintenance of our bus fleet, some of our gas, some of our transportation for the time when students weren't transported, even some of the contracts that we had that we, we went to court, that we didn't pay 100% of the contracts for transportation when they weren't transporting, but we paid 80%, so that's a 20% savings there. So there should be some monies left, and as always with that money, a portion of that money, which we already have allocated in our budget, 5.8 million of the excess surplus is gonna be used to fund next year's budget. So let's say that amount at the end of this year was, I don't know, 10 million, $12 million. Anything above that 5.8, we've already allocated about $2 million that we're gonna move to capital reserve already. So anything above that, so that brings us up to about $8 million. If there's anything above that amount, we, the board would have to vote on what they wanna do. If you ask me what we would do with our overcrowding, I would ask the board and the Finance and Facility Committee to put that money into as much as we could in maintenance reserve and capital reserve. So then we have it like in a bank account. When we're ready to make an addition, we're ready to build a new elementary school, whatever we need, it's money in the bank. Some people would say use it to fund next year's budget, which some districts could do, but the problem with that is if you use excess surplus this year, let's say it's $10 million to fund this, next, next year's budget, which means the year moving forward, we can't guarantee we're gonna have $10 million next year, and then we're gonna be in a large hole. So Greg's predecessor, you know, before he came, Mr. Mashaw, was here for a long time. The excess surplus that was used on an annual basis was about $5 million for the last number of years. And I think that keeps the budget stable. If that fluctuates too much, then you could have a significant deficit next year, and maybe then not be able to go at a zero tax levy cap and have to use bank cap just to make the, make up for that revenue loss. So again, I think that's a, that's a, I don't think, it's a topic of conversation in June for the Finance and Facilities Committee, and then to bring to the full board, and I'll make a vote on whether we wanna make, whatever transfers you wanna make to either capital reserve or maintenance reserve. And Greg, did I miss anything, Mr. Bragan?
No, you covered it very well, Dr. Bragan.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan.
The, the other thing is that we have to remember that our fiscal year ends on June 30, and the budget is in May. So anything that the surplus that we have, it is for the following year. It's not for this budget that we are approving. So, yeah, as you said, if we have surplus, we'll allocate them, and after all the audit is done, we know exactly how much the money we're gonna have. The audit yearly, they don't, they do that, what, somewhere November, December time, we'll see exactly every penny that we have for the current year's budget, and that'll be used for the following year, not this coming.
It would actually be, the excess surplus would be for the 2022, 2023 budget, which people don't always understand. It's what the account, when we get the auditor comes in, that's what they report about the end of the year as of June 30. That's why we knew last June, you know, what our excess surplus would be for this year in the budget, because that's when they determine what it would be for the year moving forward. because that's when they determine what it would be for the year moving forward.
Yep. Okay, any other questions?
I just have one final question.
Yes.
The meeting that you're having tomorrow with Alamo, will that, who will be attending that meeting? Is that the Finance and Facilities Administration? Who?
Right now, I think it's only with the administration. I didn't get a chance to talk to the Finance and Facility Committee. We could send it out. I mean, literally, that happened in the phone on a, in a car ride today. And I want to get the numbers as quickly as I can, and as soon as I get them, I'll share them with everyone. I think everybody's welcome. I forget the time. Is it 2:30? We got a tight schedule for tomorrow.
You mentioned 2:30, yeah.
So if anyone on the Finance and Facility Committee would like to come or can come, they're more than welcome. But I just wanted to get that information as quickly as I can at your request to share with the full board, the committee first, obviously. But, yeah, I don't have an objection, Mr. Shi, if we invite the committee people, if they want to show up.
Absolutely.
I just, I didn't want to assume anything, because it's in the middle of the day. I think it, Dr. Alarela, is it 2:30? So it'll be at the Ed Center at 2:30, so Finance and Facility Committee members want to come right before we have our meeting for negotiations at 3 with our attorney.
Thank you.
Any other board member?
Yes.
Yes.
So, Dr. Brigan, on page 40, this is coming from a resident. Did we save $500,000 on Apple device purchase or something? So why do we have, again, money allocated for Apple these purchases? If you can elaborate and provide details on where this will be going?
You know, they warned me about you, Mr. Patel. They said you read everything. They were right. That's a great question. We have a four-year lease right now on our Apple MacBooks that we have at our high schools. That lease is due technically, the last final payment of $1.7 million is due in July. So we had a budget for that amount. So our plan is, we're going to pay that lease in July, which is our final commitment to that payment of $1.7 million about. Then we own those devices. We are then going to sell them. We've already got interest in those devices that we can sell them for at least the amount of that lease, $1.7 million. We hope to sell it for more, but we have a commitment that we will at least get that amount. We are then going to use that amount and renew another four-year lease at $1.2 million a year. So we will have a surplus of $500,000 that will be in excess, that at the end of the year will be part of that excess surplus. If we sell them for $2 million, which we could do, because there's a scarcity of MacBooks, even ones that are, that will be going on four years old. Again, that'll be added to the surplus that we'll talk about next year. What are we going to do with it? So we had to budget that amount. That's a really good question, because the lease technically isn't done yet. So July is the fourth payment. We're going to pay the $1.7 million. And as I said, then we own all those devices. We're going to sell them. We already have somebody interested in purchasing them. And use that profit to buy the new one, and the new four-year lease commitment right now is at $1.2 million.
Okay. Another one is for the insurance. So what is the group's stop-loss insurance? If, for example, if an insured have expenses more than $30 million, right? So is that, does the stop-loss insurance cover there?
It depends. You know, the stop-loss insurance, we have it now. Anyone that has our insurance through Edison Township Board of Education, whatever plan you have, we have stop-loss insurance. Horizon's individual stop-loss gap right now is $300,000. So God forbid, I had some terminal illness or got in a car accident or something, and my expenses and claims were a million dollars. The insurance company is going to pay all the bills up to $300,000. Then we have reinsurance. I don't know exactly who the reinsurance is with. That's in the insurance pool behind the scenes. They get reinsurance, Lloyds of London, these companies that are huge and have been around for a long time. They would then make up the difference and pay whatever that cost was. The significance in the change in price wouldn't be this year. They do, they have actuaries that determine our risk by the number of lives that we have and the number of claims that we have. And they do it over years, they over time. They can pretty accurately, you know, what you've done in the future is a fairly accurate prediction of what will happen in, and what you've done in the past is a fairly accurate prediction of what you'll do in the future. So they make those adjustments, and they have our premium for this year. I'm making up the number. Let's say our stop-loss premium for this year was $2 million. I don't know that, I'm just picking that number out. And our claims were less than what they thought they would be. We didn't have, a lot of people didn't go over that $300,000 mark. Well, then our premium next year hopefully would be lower, maybe 1.5, right? But if a significant amount of people went over that $300,000, within that $2 million stop-loss premium, maybe $4 million next year. So really, the liability for us is next year, not this year. But that's the same as it is now. Like, what many people don't understand about health insurance, and I didn't understand it until I sat at this desk either, is that you, the individual, you have health insurance. You're insured for whatever your illnesses are. There's usually no lifetime cap on whatever your disability or needs would be. We, as a district, we don't really have insurance. It's a myth. Because if we pay $30 million in premiums this year, right? That's what we charge. And our expenses this year are $32 million. Next year, we're paying $34 million, because we're going to pay the additional cost this year, and then we're going to pay the 15% that the vendors and the healthcare providers make. So we really don't have insurance. Individuals do, but the district doesn't. And it's misleading at times. And that's why the Finance and Facility Committee, their position was, why take that 15% profit and just give it to the carrier? Why not give it back to our employees? And I would agree with that.
Right. And last question. So there's been some confusion. I know we probably repeated this earlier, and you did explain. But for one final time before we approve the budget, we allocated money for Lincoln last year. Out of that, some was being used, some is planned to be used. But there is money allocated for capital this year. So if you can just shed some light on all the way, starting from last year, that how we got the money for Lincoln and how it flows into this year until June and into the next year?
Yeah, great, great question. The Lincoln Project is going to cost about $9 million. We're thinking it actually may come in a little less, because it's really competitive now with contractors. But that was the allocation. So last year, about this time, you know, the board decided to, the Lincoln addition we needed. The referendum didn't pass. We have to do something. Lincoln's our most overcrowded elementary school. And we need to add additional 10 classrooms with also a gymnasium and expand the cafeteria space, as well as a theater kind of stage area and some other areas of renovation, including in the front end and the atrium when you walk in. So the board decided to allocate in that budget, last year, this year's budget, we did it last year for this year, $9 million, which what we thought the cost of that would be to do that. In the summer, because of the COVID and the impact of the tax revenues on the state, the state said we're losing $3 million. So the board, we met as a finance committee, and we brought it to the full board and said, listen, we don't want to cut programs, we don't want to cut staff. It's the summer. We've already allocated people. We have staff members coming back. We have $9.5 million in Capital Reserve. So why don't we just leave that money, take it out of the Lincoln Project? So now we only have $6 million in the budget for Lincoln. And if, when it comes time to pay the bill, we have, we have the $3 million in Capital Reserve, like in that bank account. So that's what the board decided. So right now, this budget is $6 million this year for the Lincoln Project. We've probably spent, I don't know, half a million dollars on preliminaries, on the architecture work and other things. So we still have, I'm making up the number, I don't have the exact one off the top of my head, about $5.5 million of the Lincoln Project money that was allocated. It's still in the budget right now. If June 30th comes and goes, and we haven't paid out any bills yet, which we might not, we'll have the contractors approved. Hopefully, we'll have it approved and have shovels in the ground shortly after school gets out. But we not get, we may not get billed yet until after June 30th. So that remaining money for the Lincoln Fund will go into Capital Reserve, which is like the bank account for the project. And when the bills come due, we'll pay them out of that. So in this year's budget, there is also six, the next year, I'm confusing myself. The one we have now for the next school year that we're approving tonight, we also have a $6 million capital outlay for projects. Some of those projects I alluded to before. Hopefully, we can get one of those properties, right? Whether that's this property start up and running with the, on Lincoln, not Lincoln, on Towne and Coolidge for a possible career academy. It's in the very preliminary stages, but we need to fund that. The Our Saviors Church, we're going through with that purchase. That costs $2.5 million, which will come from Capital Reserve. But that may need renovation to make that into an appropriate classroom space. That, you know, we haven't gotten into those particulars yet, but that would require a capital outlay as well. Or other properties that we're looking at in order to, or additions or renovations, like, you know, look around this auditorium. I love this place, it's great, but it needs, it needs to be renovated, it needs to be upgraded, right? So all those things require capital. The Finance and Facility Committee did not, right now, today, in today's budget, dedicate what all those monies are going to, but they will. And we're going to try to do a priority of needs on overcrowding, on HVAC, and other issues that present themselves that are the most at the surface that warrant our immediate attention. And again, we'll have those determinations in the next coming months and use those monies for that. And we're also excited, I mentioned earlier, about the CARES Grant III. I'm not using the right term, ESRS III, whatever it's called, though. That's going to be approximately $12 million that we could use. And we could definitely use that for capital improvements and HVAC improvements. So we're excited. It's actually, I think, an exciting time to be on the board and to have those opportunities to do new things. I hope I answered that, Mr. Brig.
Thank you.
Any other board members? Okay, seen none. We're opening for public comments on the budget only. Anybody on the budget? Okay.
So can I ask questions about the insurance? Is that considered under the budget or not?
Yes.
Okay. So I did watch when it was proposed.
Can you pull the microphone down a little?
I'm sorry. I did watch the meeting when they spoke about it. And the questions I have are, so just listening to everything, it kind of seems like that you kind of play like the stock market with self-insurance, because you really don't know what the actual savings is going to be. I mean, if Alamo said to us, well, you're going to save $5 million, and if you don't, we'll then fund that $5 million. Like, there's no guarantee that they're actually, we're actually going to have a savings. So the effect that we'll find out will be the following year. Is that what I'm understanding? So we won't really know the first year what, what the actual savings is going to be and if there is actually a savings or not. And the question also is the stop-loss insurance. I know we currently have it now, but from what I've researched, there's also possibilities that if there is too many claims, that the stop-loss insurance could also not be renewed. That's a few articles that I read online from companies that actually, that actually do the self-insurance. And I've watched some videos about it. So that's another question I have. What happens if the stop insurance, or the stop-loss insurance does not get renewed? What happens there? Does the district now have to fund all that because we have a bad, I guess, credit rating because of using, having too many claims? And then the other, last question I have is, if we do find out that we are, it's costing us more money to get out of the self-insurance and back into the regular insurance plan, or whatever you want to call it, how does that process happen? And what does it take? Does it cost us, like, is there a lump sum of money that we have to put out at that point to get back into the regular insurance plan? So those are my questions. Again, it just doesn't seem like there are, there's a lot of, I mean, you know, yeah, if it helps us, great. If there's a lot of savings, great. But I just, I questioned from the company that came in. You know, they seemed like this is definitely going to be a savings. We're going to definitely do great with this. Again, where's the guarantee for that? There's no guarantee from anybody that we're going to have more claims. We could have less claims. We might have more. So these questions, you know, are really what I have and my concern about, you know, how are we going to, I guess, we're going to have to take away from maybe some of the capital to cover if it's more money. But then we're now taking away from the capital that could be helping the buildings, where sometimes it's better to know what you're going to be getting, you know? Because at least you know every year what the insurance is going to cost you, you know? I mean, it does cost more for that 15% that Dr. Brigan was saying as far as the fees that the insurance company takes. But what if our costs end up to be more than that 15%? Well, if that's the case, then it's really not worth it for us to do self-insurance. So again, the guarantees are really what, you know, what my questions are. So thank you.
You want to address that?
Sure. I understand the questions, and I understand the concerns. Regarding guarantees, I don't have a guarantee the sun's coming up tomorrow, Tony, but I'm counting on it. And the one day it doesn't, well, we're all screwed, you know? And we'll just deal with that. To make the analogy that it's playing the stock market, I would disagree with that. I happen to have been actively involved in this at a district level for a number of years now. Only a few years here in Edison, but I did in Hazit for over 10 years. And I kind of know how the game is played. And we all had your bets to some degree. But I wouldn't be sitting up here advocating for something I didn't think was appropriate, because next year, Tony, you're going to be up here or on this side or somewhere saying, Bernie, what the heck did you do? And I don't want to hear that, Tony. As much as I like hearing you talk, I don't want to hear that. And I wouldn't put our people in harm's way, because the people that would suffer would be our taxpayers as well as our employees. Really, what we're trying to do, and you're right, what if the, what if the insurance company went bankrupt, right? And they couldn't fund this anymore? I want to believe and say that could never happen, right? Until Lehman Brothers went out of business, right? Until AIG almost went bankrupt. Until Arthur Andersen bankrupt Enron. And I can go on and on. WorldCom, right? So I want to say that will never happen, because there are things in place that could make sure that doesn't. But those scop gaps don't work, right? And our financial oversight isn't always what it should be in insurance companies or any financial company. But I'm counting on that not happening, right? Horizon, you go outside, you're on the beach, you see this lovely blue blimp flying around, right? You look at it, oh, it's pretty. I look at it and I get pissed off. I'm like, they're charging me too much money. They got a multimillion-dollar blimp flying around, and they can't process my claim for my chiropractic, because my daughter's in Pennsylvania at Villanova, and they want me to go down to the Villanova or the Pennsylvania Blue Cross and Blue Shield. It's ridiculous. So why do I want to give them the money for the blimp? And that's really all we're trying to do. We're not changing anything. The coverage isn't going to be different. It's guaranteed. We have collective bargaining agreements with almost every unit. So we couldn't change it even if we wanted to. I understand some trepidation, and we're budgeting a lower cost, thinking it's going to be a brat right. We could have budgeted a higher cost, but then it would have cost all the taxpayers more now. So it's kind of six and a half dozen another. We're budgeting less. If it goes more, we do have a little bit in capital that we could use and not increase the taxes. I think that's better than increasing the taxes now and then giving it to the healthcare providers. And we never know what it's going to be every year. Every year, they come back with renewals that I think are ridiculous. We met in a finance meeting, if, I'll share some information if that's all right with Board President Shi, with some of the providers, we're sharing what their renewals would be. And, you know, I had a discussion with them. Some of our claims in the early months of the pandemic, March, April, and May, were significantly lower premiums. Let's say the premium was $3 million. Our claims were under $100,000. That means every month, we're paying them $3 million, because that's our commitment, and the outlay is less than a million. I asked them, where's that, where's that go? Where's that profit go? Ah, well, you know, we take the risk, and you take the profit. So we said, well, then for next year, we shouldn't be going at the same rate. We should be less, because you made significantly more profit than you normally would. And they said, no, 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 we're not doing that, because we think it's going to go up. So you're going up 10% next year. It's absurd. And when you get behind the scenes and see the money involved and what these people do, again, I'm not maligning anybody. Everybody has to eat and make a living, but they're ripping us off. They're, the carriers are ripping off us. So I'm advocating for a no. Why don't we keep the money here? And I don't think we're at that big a risk, but everything's a risk. I'm not going to lie to you. Like I said, I'm counting on the sun coming up tomorrow. If it doesn't, eh. Good run.
Any other public comments? Yes. Budget.
Brian Rivera, Stony Road. First of all, Dr. Brigan, you're an amazing presenter.
I'm glad I'm still full.
Happy giggling over there with your comment, which was, which was great. But I'd also have a couple of concerns. I'm the guy that's not sure about this either, with this self-insurance. I'm the guy that's not sure about this either, with this self-insurance. And people question, "Where do I get my information from?" I'm an administrator, been in the game for 22 years. I superintendent friends. I have business administrator friends. I have human resources friends. I talk to them, I ask questions. I showed up late to the last meeting, was coaching baseball. Hmm, who are these people? I don't even know what's going on, even though there was a presentation. Go on my group chat, about seven central administrators, and ask, "What do you think?" And then they give me information. So then I question it. And some of the information, yeah. So call it due diligence, call it somebody who cares about their kids that are in the system, call it about an educator who loves kids. I'm going to question it. I don't see why individuals have to be attacked for questioning. So, yeah, I have some reservations regarding this. And I know it's your best intentions. You know what I mean? You're coming up here, you're doing a job. You're doing it for a reason. You love kids, and it's best, you have best intentions. So I'm not criticizing you, I'm not criticizing anybody on the board. But yeah, there's worry about it. So when I talk to my friends, you know, they give me all these questions to ask, and you know what? I showed up, they gave me eight questions to shout out. I shouted out the questions. I was told to go to YouTube and watch the presentation. Guess what? Half of them weren't even answered. So I said, "Go watch YouTube." They weren't answered. So then I talked to my business friends, I showed them the videos, and they're just like, "Whoa, I don't know if this is the right time to go about it." So the one comment I want to say, talking to my group, is you can't compare one district to another, because there's different factors. You're absolutely right. But you should say, "It appears the consultants and the board is rushing into this." I don't understand why we're rushing into this. Like I said, it caught me off guard last week, I didn't even know there was this presentation. So I do have some reservations, why are we rushing into this? I understand there's savings, but, okay. The other question I have to ask, just listening to this, was, Dr. Bragan, you said you were taking $5 million to cover this budget too, from reserve, was it, or something? Like, or is it just zero? Like, is there any coverage from reserves or nothing? So we're starting off flat, we're not taking any money, we're from nowhere. So that five, that $5 million in savings that we're estimating that we're not budgeting, we're not having that covered from anywhere?
Finish all your questions.
I'll answer that one either.
And the other thing I want to say too is, like, we, I heard a comment too, that, you know, things were brought to the financing facilities that made the decision. I want to say that I argued this for two meetings already, that no, it hasn't been. And I never get my answered question, and I understand why, because who's going to want to answer that question? It's a tough question. But I honestly think all four members of that finance committee, I would love to hear what their vote was on certain things. But again, to each her own. God bless you, I hope you all have a wonderful night. I mean, concerned parent and concerned Edison resident. So you guys be good.
Thank you.
Want to address any of that?
Yeah, I could talk to some of it. Regarding the $5 million, where did it come from? We actually budgeted less for our healthcare. That amount for medical prescription and dental, anticipating that would be the savings. And that kept the budget at zero of an increase until we added the state aid, and that money was to offset the salary increases for our employees, which across the entire district, even though some collective bargaining agreements are not settled yet, is over $5 million. So that's where the difference came, and we were able to keep the budget at zero. One of the other things, I don't really believe we're rushing into it. I don't believe that. We've been talking about it, we were looking at it last year. I know since I've been here, we've been looking at that option. And I don't think we're rushing into it. And there's two things that I want to mention on that. Let's say this doesn't work, right? Doesn't go as we anticipated, and for whatever reason, it doesn't work out. We can always go back into a carrier-driven plan the next year. We're over a $40 million book of business. Everybody wants to take us to the dance. That's never happened to me before. I was usually the guy by myself at the bowling alley. But now everybody wants to take me out to eat and go to dance, and they want to talk about things. Because we are that big a place, that big a book of business, seriously though, that they can make a profit. So even if it doesn't work, and we want to go to a carrier-driven plan the following year, there will be people that will be, will want that business for us, and will want to come in cheaper to get us initially. And we know how that game's played. You come in low the first year, then the next year, the renewals are higher. So we know that. But really, the incentive here is, and I do, I do believe this, in take the profit from them and give it back to the people. That's what I really believe. If I'm wrong, then I'm wrong. But I don't think I am.
Okay. Any other public comments? Yes, Beth. Take your time, no rush. It's all right.
Beth Talke, Midwood Avenue. Just a quick question. I understand, yes, we want to save money. As a taxpayer, I want to save money. As an employee in the district, I also want to know, I'd like, you know, seamless, no problems with our insurance going on. As a taxpayer, I am concerned, though, to me, almost the self-insurance sounds almost too good to be true. Yes, we're saving money upfront, yes, we all want to save money. But then, what happens on the back end if we want to get out of it? Because I know you said we had like that three-month kind of period in the beginning to find out what the costs are. And say, when we do want to get out of it, what cost will it be to us to get out of it to the taxpayers on the back end if we're not saving as much? And I understand we're not now, say, giving extra money or the profit to the insurance company. But isn't now that profit being split up amongst, well, we're getting some of it, but then these people who are self, you know, for the catastrophic, they're making money on it, Alamo's profiting on it, so is the profit going to be that total 15% for us? Now, is it spread out, just not going to that one insurance company, but getting spread amongst these other entities? And that's my question. Thank you.
I think those are great points, and, you know, I understand the concerns. As I said last week, I got the same insurance, so I don't want any compromises in that coverage either. I got three kids that are still on my plan. Hopeful, one day they'll go off my plan, my iPhones, they'll go off my car insurance, hopefully. I'm hopeful. Hasn't happened yet. But nonetheless, Beth, I understand your concerns, and what would the cost be if we wanted to get out of this and go back into a traditional plan? I can't guarantee what that would be, because we would have to bid that out, and what the renewals would be, what people would offer us to go back into, let's say, a carrier-driven Horizon plan, or an Aetna plan, or whoever else is in the market that can deal with an organization as large as ours. But we don't know that on a year-to-year basis. This is the concern I have, that there's a misunderstanding here, that somehow we're taking on this enormous risk. Every year, we go out to insurance renewal. Every year. And every year, it's based on the claims from the year before. Every year. It's not like we have insurance. We pay 15% more than what it cost us the year before. Every year. And when they anticipate it's going up, they may make it 20%. And we have a 2% tax levy cap. It's not sustainable. I don't know what the long-term answer is to that, but we operate under that exact same risk every year. All we're trying to do is take the profit from the carrier and give it back to us. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. It's not going to cost us $10 million next year to go back into Horizon. It's going to cost what it would have cost anyway. So I understand the reservations, and I really do, as employees, you know, it's our healthcare, right? It's near and dear to us. We're not in England, we're not in Canada, we don't have national healthcare, and thank God we don't, because the tax rate's almost 50%. We live in a different society that we have to bid for it every year. And I believe in our society. I believe in a capitalist market that's regulated by government. Right now, we are getting ripped off. All of you, me too. I don't like getting ripped off. I want to give the money to you as the employee, and I'm not going to compromise Beth Talke's healthcare plan or anybody else's, because, one, I wouldn't do it to you, and I'm not as dumb as I look, I'm not going to do it to myself. So I understand the reservations. I ask that you trust us, that we're not, and if this comes back, when we meet with the carriers tomorrow, and it's not going to save us any money, and it's going to be exactly the same, or whatever it is, we'll come back to you guys and say, "You know what? Maybe we need to look at a different direction." This isn't helter-skelter, we're doing this 100% no matter what. But having the experience of working in this field, and I haven't, I didn't have any insurance experience. I went to school, I got a doctorate in education, I did all that stuff. No one gave me a class on health insurance, or prescription, or dental insurance. And I learned the intricacies of this when I was a superintendent and assistant superintendent in Hazit. I had a fortunate colleague that had me in all those meetings, and it was eye-opening to me, Beth. It was eye-opening on the profit they made, and that we, as a district, don't really have insurance. We pay exactly what our claims are the year before, plus 15% for their profit. And all we're asking is to take that profit away. But I do understand. I do. Trust me.
Any other public comments? Okay, three minutes. It's all right.
So I don't think the question is the savings, you know? Do it, if you could do it. I think the question is the public trust. The fact that we had a presentation and no numbers were given. Like, I actually agree with Shivie said up there, like, you know, we had a presentation, no numbers were given. I asked her, one of my questions was, "Give me specific examples, give me a number, tell me how it works." And it wasn't given. So I think that's the, it's the information part about it. Just like I said a couple of meetings before about the caucus, when Crisco was talking about caucus and these other meetings. It's just, the information isn't given ahead of time. So there's going to be questioning about it. Like I said, I took it back to my people, "What are the numbers? I got no numbers to give you, bro." Because none were given to me. But I think that's what the issue is. It's not transparent to the public, it's not transparent to the staff members of what the actual numbers are, and how it actually works, and how it facilitates. If you could get a savings and guarantee everybody this, they're going to be happy. But when I hear the word "guarantee," did anybody watch the movie Tommy Boy? Do you remember what Tommy Boy said what guarantee means? It's not on the box. If it's not on the box, blah, 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 blah. I might want to say the rest of it, because it's not probably appropriate. But there's what guarantee means to people, especially the working class. So I think that's the issue, is the numbers aren't there, we're not available to see it, we're not able to do the math ourselves, ask our questions, or ask our own friends, "Do you think it's a viable option?" But to be honest with you, when I do speak to other business administrators, they do say, "Yes, self-insurance is possibly the way to go, but there are many factors. You got to look at the data of the district, you know, how many people are, I hate to say this, how many people are the younger people, the older people that work here, what are their, some of their health issues that they have?" It all becomes a part of this. So, you know, are we looking at the data, not last year's data because of COVID, but what's the trend for the last three years? You know? I don't know, because it wasn't shared. Like, and so that's, I think that's the issue, Dr. Bragan. Applause to you that you're doing this, that you're trying to save, like, I'm not trying to take, take your, take it away from you. You know, I'm glad you're doing this, you're being innovative in how you could save. But with innovation, there are concerns, like, when people just don't know. And to be honest with you, yeah, I showed up late, I wanted, hey, your question, check out this. I checked it out. Nothing, there was nothing there for me. And I think that's the real issue. So I do have to agree with the fact that the numbers aren't proposed, we don't know, you're meeting tomorrow about it to figure out, wow, we got this big thing, we're going to share it with yous. People on the finance committee weren't even aware of it, you know, they're on, they're on the committee, they should be there to witness what's going on and answer any one of our questions, and I apologize for going so too far. But I think that's the issue, is that we don't have the numbers in front of us.
All right. So, Dr. Bragan, you want to?
Sure.
Repeat that, address that, yeah.
The specific premiums and claims numbers in aggregate, I could share that with you, Brian, if you wanted that. But one of the places you could look at the accurate numbers for now, and what we budgeted on an annual basis, is on our website. The budget, the preliminary budget is there. It's not approved yet, but it's the document that's in a spreadsheet-type format. Excuse me, Mr. Brenner, is it spreadsheet or PDF? It's spreadsheet on them?
It's a PDF.
PDF.
It was a spreadsheet, made into, made into a PDF.
And I think there's a couple of years there, so if you go down to, I think it's 291, 220, 291, 280? 291, 290, the account number for health benefits. You could compare year-to-year basis. And this year's allocation for health benefits, medical prescription and dental, is 15% budgeted less than it was last year. Because that's what we used to call when I was growing up with the bookies, that's the vig. That's what they get, the carriers. That's their profit margin. If we go over that, they charge us more next year. So all we're doing is trying to take that away. As much as I like the bookies, I don't want to keep them in business. So there is a trend on our website, going back a few years of the preliminary budgets, I believe. If not, I could share that information, so you would have what we budgeted. And as far as claims compared to premiums, I can get that information. We do use that as we make those predictions, though. And, you know, we can't share all that information, because it's not for public consumption, but I can get you some aggregate numbers if you want. Absolutely.
Tony, this is Paul through Pine Street. You know, I mean, if it, if it works, fantastic. And I'll be the first one to come up here and say, "Great, we saved $5 million, this is fantastic, you know, you guys did a great job." But again, watching last week, and the first question I have is, why are we only going with one broker? What percentage are they making? Do they make more money out of the self-insurance, or do they make more money out of the other insurance? Why do we, if they're, you know, if they get a 20%, say, profit out of this, why aren't we looking at another broker that maybe is only getting 10% profit out of this? You know, so as Brian was saying, I, you know, I don't, my problem is not you guys presenting this, it's just the presentation they gave last week, or whatever it was, a few weeks ago, you know, they're making money on this. So they're going to say what they need, and I'm not saying they're lying, but the way they present things, just like a salesperson present things, you know, they want us to go for it, they want us to get it. Again, is it because they get more profit out of it? Well, I don't know. But, you know, the answers today, to some of the questions last week were, you know, I thought she even said, I think she even said, "Well, we guarantee you're going to get $5 million." Or she did say "guarantee," but she really made it a point to say that we're going to save that money. So, you know, I don't know if it would be good for them to come back and, you know, have another presentation and give us more details, or have the public maybe ask more questions. But again, I don't think the concern is, "Hey, great, we're going to save money." I think the concern is, as Brian was saying, the presentation of it was just, you know, it was almost like, like I said, I'm at a used car sales place, and they're not giving me all the information, because they just want me to buy this car. And that's, that's just probably one of the bigger concerns, is, you know, we need to know what the information really is, and, you know, that's, I think that's really, you know, would do well for the residents and the teachers. Again, I know they have to have the same coverage, I understand the negotiations with the, so I'm not worried about the coverage the teachers have. As you said, that's, that's not the question. It's the company, and how, you know, how, how are we, you know, why are we trusting them to say we are going to save this money? You know, they said, "From a few years, they can predict things." Well, predictions sometimes are incorrect. And we know that. Predictions are not guaranteed, but, you know, it's just, there's just so many questions. And, you know, for residents to feel comfortable and teachers feel comfortable, answers really will make that more comfortable for everybody. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Briggin.
Great points. The Finance and Facility Committee meeting of last year, if, if they remember, I don't know if we presented that in public, I don't know if you remember, but we asked that, we put in RFP, which is a request for proposals for professional services for brokerage-free for health benefits. And the Alamo Insurance Group actually came in at the lowest rate, and they were board-approved at a 1.5 percentage of the overall premiums, not to exceed a maximum cap of $240,000 for insurance broker fees. So that's what they're operating under right now. So regardless of the plan they get for us, the cost they get, they're capped at that amount. And if you look at the industry standard for a district our size, it's around $250,000, $300,000. They're in that market of that price, it's not extraordinary, it's not exorbitant. It's a service, hey, Adam Smith's invisible hand is what moves the economy. If people didn't make money, nobody would do anything, right? So I don't fault anybody for making a living and making a few dollars, that's, that's what America's all about. But we don't wanna get exploited. And I, I think the remuneration that Alamo receives for their services is commensurate with the professional service they provide. They were given the director from us to pursue all these other options. They don't make any more or any less money on any plan that they give us, not from us, it's the flat fee. So I, I do appreciate your concerns. My mom raised me really not to trust anybody, so I, I view everyone as a used car salesman, and until I sign on the dotted line and I know that I'm getting a value for my buck, my buck, I, I have those reservations too, Tony. But they're not, whatever plan that they give us has to be what's in our best needs, and they don't make more money regardless of that. And the fact that school boards, except for superintendents, who sometimes you could be stuck with for five years, although I wasn't that fortunate here yet, but anyway. Every other contract in a school board is one year. So if I'm Lou Alamo and I want the business for next year, I'm gonna make sure I provide an appropriate service that this Board of Education, who's very diligent in dealing with vendors and making sure we get the best deal, they're not gonna renew them. So there's an incentive for them to stay in the game and to keep our business, to do what's right by the district as well. I think that's the way the system is set up to protect us from those, you know, used car salesman-type things. Sorry, I rambled a little bit, Mr. Shi.
It's okay.
I slept at a Holiday Inn last night.
That's fine. All right, any other public comments on the budget? Okay. Sinan, can I have a motion to approve the resolution of the 2021, 2022 school budget? Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Mohim Patel, anybody else? Okay, Mrs. White, roll call.
Miss, I'm gonna skip over Mr. Burel Patel, I guess he stepped out for a minute. Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Madikar?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
At this time, due to my uncertainty, it might be better tomorrow, I have to say no.
Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Mr. Mohim Patel?
Yes.
And Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Okay, motion's carried.
All right. So move on, we have, the next item is the personnel reappointment, the labor relations. So we are opening for public comments on that items only. Anyone have any comments on the personnel item? Any board members?
Just, I just have one question. A new copy was left on my table today, and this is different than what was sent to us on Friday. So are the changes only the ones on the first page, or are there more changes inside? Because I did not see anything else in red.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
I'll take a quick look, but the changes should have been listed in red. And those would be the only changes, I would double-check real quick on what's.
Yeah, quickly glance, or I don't, but let's just give it, give it a sec.
I believe that to be accurate.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, any more?
Mr. Shi, can I comment on something before you vote?
Yes, please, please.
I just wanna say, to a heavy heart, that on this agenda for personnel resolutions, we see Dr. Chris Conklin's resignation. He served this district for many years, and he served it well. He will be missed, he's moving on to bigger and better things as a superintendent. And I wanna personally say, I appreciate the short time we have with you, Chris, and your professionalism, your commitment to the district and the special needs population of our students, and also trying to do what's best from a financial perspective. You'll be sorely missed, and I'm gonna miss seeing you on a regular basis and having that comfort level, knowing that everything was taken care of and special services with you there. Best wishes, Chris, and you will be missed.
Lot of your service in Edison. Good luck on your new job. Any other board members' comments? Okay. All right, public? Sinan, all right? Can I have a motion for the approval of the personnel reappointment?
Motion.
Okay, anybody else, second? Do I have a second? Okay, Mrs. Podolsky.
Okay. Mr. Burel Patel?
Yes, on the motion.
Ms. White?
I'm abstaining from teachers, yes to everything else.
Okay. Ms. Madikar?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
I have to abstain from a couple of teachers, so therefore, everybody else is yes.
Do you wanna specific or just?
And, let's try. Unless you want the particular names.
It's, it's your call, you can, you can abstain on the whole section, or you can specific on the name, it's your call, whatever you wanna do.
Which do you prefer?
Whatever you prefer, or you can, you know, doesn't, doesn't matter.
The BA, which do you prefer?
Okay, abstain from all those, okay.
If it's okay with you, Mrs. Conway, we could have you abstain from any relatives and approval for all the others, we'll put that in the notes.
Gotcha.
Thanks, Mr. Brennan.
Got it. Okay, Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Mr. Mohim Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Okay, so Bureau, do you want a Bureau, to get a Bureau's vote on the budget? You, you missed it when we were voting on the budget.
Are you in vote on the budget?
No, you didn't, no, you won't.
Oh, yes, on the budget.
Yes, on the budget, okay.
All right. Okay, so now we are open for board member comments, open discussions, I'm gonna go this, this time, this, this row. Mohim, you wanna, yeah, anything you wanna comment on it?
Not at this moment.
Okay, Mrs. White?
I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Mother's Day.
Ginny.
Happy Mother's Day, everybody.
Okay, Ms. Conway?
Not at this time.
Okay. Dr. Chen, no? Mrs. Ben?
No.
Carol?
Not at this time.
Okay, Shivie?
No, thanks.
Bureau? Nothing?
I'd like to add also, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, thank you.
And this week is Teacher Appreciation Week.
Correct.
Yep. All right, I wanna thank all the teachers and all the staff for what you have done this year. I have, so I have some names, I just want to, give me a second. At last meeting, I mentioned that we have a student who got accepted into the US Military Academy, West Point. His name is Justin Yum. But I found out, we actually have more, okay? We have a student, Sanjana Basu Malik. She's attending the Naval Academy.
Awesome.
Matthew Wu from JP Stevens is attending West Point. He is attending the Air Force Academy. And David Cho is attending Virginia Military Institute on ROTC Scholarship. There might be some, one name that, that might not be accurate, but this is what I have as of the other day. So this is the first time in the recent JP history we have these graduates, these graduates attending military academies. This, I'm so, so proud of what are these students, they have achieved. Last year, we have a student, Casey Clatto, attended West Point. And this year, we have five kids attending the Military Academy. I hope the trend will continue, and very proud of these students who make this choice to join the military after they graduate. Only 1% of the high school students, the, the people who graduate from high school attends, either enlist themselves in the military or go to Military Academy. We have five from JP. Tremendous, tremendous achievement, and this is history in the making. Very proud. And as I said last time, you know, we have a lot of parents who are looking at Ivy Leagues and stuff like that. And the opportunities these military institute provides is probably 10 times more than Harvard, Princeton, Yale, and MIT. I can say that, because I have experience. So parents, you know, if your child is looking for colleges and stuff, don't just look at the Ivy Leagues, the traditional colleges, look at these military institutes. The opportunities they're gonna get when they graduate, these other schools cannot compete. That's a comment I have, thank you. See, if we don't have any more school board member comments, now we're open for public comments. Yes, yes, Maria.
Hi, thank you, thank you, everybody, Maria Orchid, 83 Jefferson. A couple of things. First, if everybody can keep in your prayers, everyone taking the SATs on Saturday? Thank you. Second thing is, if we can consider the ROTC in our schools, we're missing a tremendous opportunity with grants. On Saturday morning, Clara Barton Neighborhood is going to be doing a cleanup. We would love any volunteers, please come to the First Aid Squad on Amboy Avenue. And if there's any high school students or any middle school students, we'd be happy to give out certificates. The other thing I was considering, I understand the budget, but in this time of our overcrowding issues, if we could take substantial steps. I know you're putting money aside, but in hopes September, we're all coming back. I think we need to make some progress on, especially in middle schools and high schools, on how to actually handle the situation. I don't think our population is ever going down. We're a very desirable location, location, location. We have one of the best school districts in New Jersey. So I think we need to, we need to address that overcrowded issue very seriously. Thank you, and again, Happy Mother's Day to everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? We, we are looking at, you know, different locations, as Dr. Briggin said. And this high school is 400 seats over the capacity. So this probably will be our first priority, but there are other avenues we are looking at it to see if we can make some changes, but there are a lot of moving pieces, it's a big, it's a puzzle. So that's why we have two architects to look at the plan, so we need to have second opinions. We'll, we'll definitely come up with something very soon, because we do need a long-term plan to, to address this. Okay, yes, Tony?
Tony, 12 Pine Street. I just wanted to congratulate Dr. Conklin on his new position. I think it's been, I don't know if it's been 10 years that, that I've conversed with him over many years about my children's education and other parents, and, you know, I do have to say that my, you know, my children are fine examples of the, the great work that, you know, that our school district has done with the special needs children. You know, I have to say, over the years, you know, myself and Mr. Conklin, some of our discussions, we haven't agreed and haven't seen things the eye to eye sometimes, but, you know, there's always been a respect on, on both sides there, where I've asked questions and, and I've gotten responses back, even if I didn't really care for the responses, or I, I just didn't agree with them. You know, so I, I just wanna say that I, you know, I have, and I've always had a, a full, deep respect for Mr. Conklin and the work that he does at, do, does, does the school district, because it's not easy with, you know, as many parents that he's, as he's dealing with and dealing with the special needs law, and parents wanting, you know, things for their children and, and things that just can't be done because of certain situations. So I know it's, it's not an easy job that, that he's, he had here. But like I said, I, I just wanna congratulate him and, you know, I, I just hope, you know, that, and I know that, that the next school district will see the fruits of what he did here in their work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
I just wanted to wish all the, the teachers in our district and our staff members that actually work here a happy teacher appreciation, you know, I value you, we all value you, thank you very much. Also, next week with our nurses, the 12th, thank you for keeping my child safe and healthy, and Happy Mother's Day, everybody have a great night.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Sinan, we're gonna, can I have a motion to close the public comments section?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all right.
Please, second.
Bureau? So I just wanna add a agenda item. We want to add a closed session to discuss a legal matter from attorney. So can I have a motion to add that on the?
I, I have a question, I have a question.
Wait, 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 wait.
You want me to wave?
Yeah, 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 what did you say?
What I was gonna say was you should indicate, we should indicate that no action is expected to be taken.
Yes.
So that the public can.
Yeah, so we don't expect any actions to be taken for, for this discussion.
Can, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So I hope we are not talking about the Community Relations Committee in this, is this legal matter about the Community Relations Committee?
We're gonna just have our attorney explain to us about some of the, the policies and stuff like that.
I think the Community Relations Committee is an open agenda item, it's not a closed agenda item. And I am the chair of this committee, and I did not ask for any legal advice. And the question really is not whether, the question really is whether to engage the public or not to engage the public. And under that logic, every single topic could be discussed and closed. So I, we are not following the law. If we are trying to keep the public out of a topic that is supposed to be discussed with the public.
Okay, so, yes, please.
So, Board Member Madikar, I'll, I'll just address your comment that everything could be within the context of the legal discussion. There is some truth to that. The legal, the legal advice that I give to the board, or that any lawyer gives to any public entity, is very broad. So there are issues that have been raised, which I think you're aware of, in conversations with other board members that implicate board policy, which implicates legal discussions, because if board policy is potentially being violated, that's a legal issue, and it needs to be addressed. And it shouldn't be discussed in an open session in front of the public. Anything involving a potential legal advice from the attorney has to be spoken about in closed session, because it's attorney-client privilege, and it's not your privilege, it's the board's privilege as a whole. So you can't speak about it in public, only the board can decide that.
Respectfully, Mr. Shedanian, I disagree, and frankly, I'm very disappointed in your advice, because you are trying to preclude the public from something that needs to be discussed in front of the public. And this is, this is based, this issue that, that board is going to be raising inside, it's an issue about the Community Relations Committee, and frankly, it came up because of two issues. First, there was an email which the chair.
Come on, come on.
Right now, it's, the floor is mine, you allowed me to speak, Jerry, you cannot stop me from speaking, okay? So, so, there are basically two, two issues, okay? The first issue was, excuse me, excuse me, I'm talking right now. I'm talking right now. Under Robert's rule, you gave me the floor right now, so I need to finish what I. So I need to finish what I have to say. So there were two, two issues that happened.
No, she, he has it, right?
I, I, no, I have the floor. I'm talking. I'm a, Jerry, I have been voted in just like how you have been voted in.
Board President, you have the gavel.
I need to speak up right now. You cannot stop me from speaking.
Shivi, he was speaking, let him finish, then you have your chance.
No, I need to speak up right now.
No, let him, let him finish.
You gave me the floor.
Let him, I did not call your name.
You called my name.
I did not call your name.
You called my name.
I did not call your name. He was talking about, he was responding to you, and you jumped in.
No, I was talking and he jumped in.
I had, no.
I asked him to provide advice.
Okay, Mr. Shidanian, you can speak, and then I will speak.
Well, first of all, the board, I think everyone in, and just for the public's knowledge, the way the board operates, this is devolving into an inappropriate conversation. The board chair is the person who can acknowledge anyone and that they can speak. And no, no member, no member of the public, not myself, no member of the board can speak until the board chair acknowledges them and recognizes them and provides them the floor. So I think everybody should maintain their level of decorum and professionalism. This is a professional board. We are professional people here. You're volunteering your time for the public, and I think it's, it's, the public deserves that kind of courtesy. What I was saying was, and I, and I concluded it, my advice to the board, and I've rendered it already, is that this is a legal matter that needs to be discussed in closed session. Once the closed session is concluded, and I give my legal advice and my opinion, the board can, as a group, make a decision as to whether or not this is a matter that should be discussed in public or not. No individual board member has the right to decide whether something should be discussed in public or in private. That's a grouped collective decision that has to be made. The law is clear, in my opinion. And with all respect, Ms. Madikar, I'm not only an attorney, and I went to law school, but I'm also a state bar trustee. I'm a trustee of a county bar association, and you don't get those positions by falling off the apple cart. I've been practicing law for 25 years. I know the Open Public Meetings Act. I've been representing public entities. You know that, you voted on my appointment. I've been representing public entities for a quarter of a century, and I can tell you right now that under the Open Public Meetings Act, if I'm going to give legal advice to this board, I would not do it in a public meeting. It's inappropriate.
Can I speak now, Jerry?
Thank you.
When is the next Community Relations meeting?
Wait, 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 wait.
Can I speak now?
No, yeah.
Jerry, you have the floor.
Yeah.
When is the next Community Relations meeting?
It's on June 15th.
It's on June 15th, right? So there was some confusion among some people, it's for June 4th or something. So if we have on June 15th, uh, and if we have to discuss in closed session, why don't we do it in the next meeting? So everyone is in the breathing room right now, and we think what to do in the meantime. Next meeting is May 20th, is that correct? So that's what I'm requesting.
Well, we have, we have other agenda items, you know, for the others, since today is a short meeting, we just talk about it and get it over with. So we don't have to drag it, um, you know, to the next meeting.
I know, it will be till 12:30 a.m., so if everyone agrees here, it will be...
Well, so, that's why I have a motion.
Board President, can I have a motion?
I was, Jerry, I want to speak.
And Jerry, I'd like to be recognized, just so I can respond to Mr. Patel.
Yes, please.
So, Mr. Patel, if I can, if I can just respond to what you were saying, my expectation is that the discussion that, at least the part that I'm gonna bring up and the advice that I'm gonna give in closed session is gonna be fairly quick. And why I think we should do it tonight, as opposed to doing it on any other night, is that after we do it tonight, we don't expect any action to be taken. There is gonna be another meeting in a couple of weeks, when at that meeting, if you want to take action based on my advice, you can take action then. But you should at least have the information that I want to give you tonight, so you can consider it moving forward.
So we are not voting inside?
Nothing. No, we're not taking any actions. It's just some legal advices, interpretations.
Okay, Mr. Shidanian, you said it's brief. How, how long do you anticipate? No, there are no guarantees, but how long do you anticipate?
Well, there's no guarantee in life, so we, we, we hope that's gonna be short.
I told you about mine.
Yes, so, um, we hope it's gonna be short, and, um...
Jerry, can I speak?
Just, let me finish.
Excuse me?
I'll recognize you when I... So, there are some questions about the interpretation, about the policy. So let's just talk about it, and, uh, then we can decide at the next meeting. Okay, it's, it's not gonna be long. Today's meetings went very quickly, so... Okay? Yes, you can speak.
Thank you. So, the reason why this whole issue came up was two, two reasons. First, I asked the, um, administration to create an email called communityrelations@edison.w Whatever, because sometimes it's hard for public to reach out to individual committee members, which was, which was denied because President Shi did not want it. Yesterday, we had a Community Relations Committee meeting, and I asked, um, Dr. Bragan to send a reminder to the community, to the parents for, um, so that people would know that there is a meeting. I mean, for a public meeting, the public needs to know. And President Shi asked Dr. Bragan not to share the, uh, the email about that meeting. We had a great turnout. The turnout might have been even better if that email would have been shared, or if that was not blocked. And I just want to say that, um, based on our bylaws, the Board of Ed President does not control district communication.
Can we, can we leave that interpretation of the bylaw to the attorney, so we can talk about it, then you can come back and discuss it?
Okay, so then I just want to say two things.
Then you can, you can come back and discuss it next meeting.
Okay, right now, right, let me just finish. Let me just finish.
He's controlled, he controls it. He's, just so everyone understands, the board chair is within his right to interrupt anyone.
Mr. Shidanian, according to the Roberts' rule, when the board president gives the floor to any of the board members, then that board member has the floor.
Except if he believes that what is being said is inappropriate.
Inappropriate.
But, but what I'm saying is not inappropriate because I'm talking about...
That's your opinion, ma'am.
I'm talking about the Community Relations Committee.
Board President, may I have a motion to go into a closed session, please?
Excuse me, I'm talking right now, I'm not done talking.
We're not gonna be able to discuss what you're talking about, those policies and everything that we're talking, what you want to talk about.
I mean, these policies, Mr. Shidanian, Mr. Patel?
Excuse me?
Mr. Patel?
Hello?
Mr. Patel, your name was not called by the board president.
You are actually going into legal stuff that we have no information on.
Mr. Patel, according to Roberts' rules, the board president has to call out the name. Only then the person can speak. And I'm, I'm not done speaking. I'm not done speaking.
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna ju... Please, I just want to use that, uh, your interpretation of the policy, is your interpretation, let's talk to the attorney, let's let him give us his opinions.
Can I just read the policy here? I have the policy.
No, 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 that's, it's, it's, we're not, we're not...
I'm, I'm, listen, I have the floor right now. I have, I have the policy in front of me, I want to read the board policy.
Come on, come on. You, you, you don't, you don't, you don't get, come on. You are, you are, this has nothing to do with it. You are disrespecting, you are disrespecting the rule of this meeting.
Every meeting you disrespect.
Okay? Okay? Every, this is not the first time, Tony. Okay?
So...
Well, we are, I am doing it right. I am doing it right. Okay? This is the second time you come to a meeting, you just, just try to disrupt the meeting. Okay? There's no, there's one more time, you're out of here. One more time, you're out of here. Last time, you, you were out of control. This time, you're disrupting the meeting again. You come to the meeting, you follow the rules. You have your time, we respect you, give you the time to speak, whatever you want to speak. But when the others are talking, respect that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not done, I'm not done. I just wanted to read the district policy that is there on the website, and I'm not going to interpret anything, I'm going to just read the policy. As far as the committees are concerned, the district policy says that committee meetings may be called at any time by the committee chairperson, or when a meeting is requested by majority of the members of the committee. Committee meetings shall not be open to the public, except that a majority of committee or the chairperson may open the meeting to the public, or invite persons whose knowledge or expertise may be useful to the committee. So, when I opened this committee to the public, I wanted the information to go out to the public, and there is no other way that the information can go out, unless we share an email with the public. So I did not, uh, the second thing I want to read up is the, um, the duties of the Board of Ed President and Vice President. This is, again, our district policy 0171. The President of the Board shall preside on all meetings of the Board, require the Board Secretary to call special meetings of the Board, sign all school district warrants, certify to all payrolls, subscribe bonds, notes, contracts, and other legal instruments for which the signature of the President is required, issue subpoenas to compel attendance of witnesses and production of documents, appoint all committees of the Board. The Vice President shall assume the, and discharge the duties of the President in the President's absence, disability, or disqualification. Nowhere does it say that the Board of Ed President does, uh, controls the communication with the public. So I just wanted to, uh, to highlight that, that you cannot, you know, I'm, I'm, as, I'm elected by the public, you are also voted in by the President, and we, we have equal rights. And, um, so I would be voting no on this, um, resolution, because I think this, this is, this breaks, because you cannot, because with that logic...
We have, there's no roll call yet, so you can vote whenever the roll call is...
Okay, and I also just, I had just printed the two things, I just wanted to read that out as well. A recent decision by the appellate division reminds New Jersey public bodies that they cannot broadly cite attorney-client privilege to avoid providing documents in response to a request made under the Oprah Act. And the second, Oprah protects communication between an attorney and his/her client in course of their relationship, which, if disclosed, could jeopardize the legal position of the client. There is no legal position here that can get jeopardized. And I will just repeat that, under the logic that Mr. Shidanian is using, any item could actually become a closed item, you just have to say it's attorney-client privilege.
Okay, you're done? Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Pang? Roll call. Uh, read, read the, read the statement, I'm sorry.
Gotcha. Section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now, therefore be it, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Legal matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no, no longer exists. No action shall be taken. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Okay. Roll call, please. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes, based on no action, and I'll be leaving early. I notified President about it.
Okay. Uh, Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Madikar?
Um, so just want to, before I vote, I just wanted to say that any discussion that has happened on this topic over email yesterday and today is all Oprah-able, so anybody can Oprah it. So I don't understand why this meeting is going into closed, where public will not be able to know what transpired. So I frankly, I hope that people don't team up against me, and I'm a little concerned about this closed-door session. And my vote is absolutely no.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
I don't understand what the purpose of this is, so I'm gonna say no.
Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Mr. Mohim Patel?
Yes.
And Mr. Shi?
Yes.
And motion is carried.
Thank you. And, uh, we do not expect to come back, uh, for, uh, for the meeting, and I'll see you guys the May 4th, all right?
Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers again.